Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Common Council meeting for this Wednesday. A little odd, but because of the President's Day weekend, we're having it this Wednesday rather than our normal Tuesday. But we're here nonetheless. So at this time, Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Yes. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated December 16th, 2024, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the Dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you so much. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
President.
Ms. Hamlet?
Here.
Ms. Calmerson?
Here.
Mr. Pulaski? Mr. Smallwood?
Here.
Ms. Toth?
Here.
Council President Turner.
Present. All right, at this time, I'd like to ask Reverend Tanner to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rob. All right. At this time, Madam Clerk, will you please read the explanatory note regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and 34, and Verizon Channels 30 and 33, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HGTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and permit all to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. Unless you are using electronic device to follow the meeting agenda, or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. All right, at this time, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of regular and closed session for February 4th, 2025?
So move.
Second?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're on to the report section of our meeting. As always, Madam Mayor, could you take us out, please?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. It has been a busy few weeks in Summit, and I wanted to take a moment to share a few updates. I had the privilege of speaking to the old guard yesterday about where we are as a city and where we're headed. And I'm happy to report we had about 100 participants who asked some terrific questions. I also met with our suburban Chamber of Commerce last Friday and gave an update on what's happening in Summit, along with the mayor of New Providence and a council member from Berkeley Heights. It was a great opportunity to strengthen our regional ties and work together on local initiatives and learn from one another. On Thursday, February 27th, the Department of Community Programs will host a Black History Month celebration at the Summit Community Center. There will be two separate programs for adults and children. Workshops will take place from 5:30 to 7:30. Rashad Wrights will present a workshop on slam poetry and songwriting, and Maurice Chestnut will also present a workshop on the history of African-American dance. There will be light refreshments served as well, and there is no pre-registration required. As always, please make sure you're following us on social media and sign up for notifications through our website so you can stay updated, especially with winter weather notices. Quick reminder to move your car off of the streets when it snows. Remember, we have the Tier and Broad Street garages for overnight parking if needed in an impending storm so that we can clear the roads. And please, if you do use those garages, be sure to move your cars by 8:00 a.m. the next day. I have an update from New Jersey Transit for commuters using the Summit train station asking about when the stairway will be repaired. Design drawings are ready for the State Historic Preservation Office to review, and that review can take about a month or at least a month. And anticipated construction is planned to start second quarter of this year, depending on the State Historic Preservation Office review and board approval. I am often out in the community and hear about potholes and other issues that people spot. And we do rely on your eyes and ears to help us stay on top of things. So please use the See Click Fix app to report any concerns you come across. It is a free app, and you can download it from the App Store. Alternatively, you can use the Report a Concern button on our city website. It's a great way for us to help keep Summit running smoothly. And I know Director Schrager will be grateful for any input into See Click Fix. Finally, as you may have ascertained from the agenda, our police chief, Chief Zagorsky, has announced his retirement. Chief Zagorsky has served Summit for 36 years, the last three as chief. We are incredibly grateful for his service, his dedication, and his leadership. Of course, we will miss him, and we wish him well in his next chapter. But I am confident that as a result of his guidance, our police department will continue to thrive upon his retirement. As a result of Chief Zagorsky's announcement, we have begun the process of identifying his successor. Thank you, that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. All right, we're on to our city administrator report. Ms. Baldwin?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. First, please be aware that Union County has issued a Code Blue alert from February 18th through February 23rd due to severe weather and below freezing temperatures. If you or someone you know needs emergency shelter, please contact 211 or visit newjersey211.org/newjerseycodeblue for assistance. Also, Summit is now participating in a countywide textile recycling program through HelpSee. This initiative allows residents to drop off unwanted clothing and accessories at designated bins throughout the city, helping reduce the waste and support sustainability. More details are available on the Union County website. The Summit Free Market will be open this Friday, February 28th, from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m., so please stop by to recycle or find something new. And finally, we are in the process of finalizing the city's budget for introduction, and we will be sending out a budget snapshot to all residents in the coming months. And this will show you where your tax dollars are going, and it will highlight any rate changes and provide a breakdown of expenses. So look forward to that. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All right, for my council president's report, I just have one thing. I do want to just thank Director Schrager and all those guys who do work tirelessly, particularly this time of year. Aaron sends out notices on when people are getting deployed and stuff, and this is at like 2:00 in the morning, or, you know, they've worked all overnight, brining or plowing or what have you, and it's a Herculean task, and they do a great job keeping our city's streets plowed and safe for us to move around. So thank you for that. And I would say Jenny Hoff has put on a great video. If you haven't seen it, I would suggest you check out, it's on our Facebook page, is that right? I think someone told me that. And it's a ride-along in one of the plow trucks, and it's pretty cool. So you can see the people, one of our dedicated workers who's driving, it talks about what he does and things like that, and it's really pretty cool. So I think it's a great tribute to all the hard work that our DPW guys do. So thank you so much. And that's my report. All right, let's move along. We've got a pinch hitter. We're going to the bullpen for our historical minute. Councilman Boyer?
Thank you, Council President. For this historic minute, as we all know, it's Black History Month, and it is time to recognize the trailblazers whose contributions have shaped our communities, our institutions, and our future. Tonight, I have the privilege of honoring one such leader, a man whose service, mentorship, and steadfast commitment to Summit left a lasting impact. Gerald Jerry Holmes. Was more than an officer, he was a pillar of our community, a mentor to many, and a force for positive change. Jerry came to Summit in 1964 after serving in the U.S. military. He joined the Summit Police Department in 1973, where he was promoted to detective in 1980, and dedicated 25 years to protecting and serving his community before retiring in 1995. But his influence extended far beyond the badge. He paved the way for future generations by fostering trust between law enforcement and the people they serve. He understood that public safety was not just about enforcing laws. It was about building relationships, investing in young people, and leading by example. Jerry played an instrumental role in shaping youth programs that still impact Summit today. He was actively involved in the Boys and Girls Club and Police Explorers. He helped launch Summit's Dare program, even dressing up as McGruff the Crime Dog to make a difference in kids' lives. Most notably, he mentored six young people, guiding them in the creation of Summit Neighborhood Council, which later evolved into the Summit Youth Center. In 1973, Jerry's dedication service to the community was recognized when he was named the New Providence United Way Citizen of the Year, a testament to his leadership, generosity, and heart. Jerry was not only a devoted public servant, but was a remarkable father and mentor. He lovingly raised five children of his own while also extending his home wisdom and support to many others in need. His selfishness and generosity knew no bounds. He was a steady hand and a guiding light for so many. His legacy lives on in the officers he trained, the young lives he touched, and the community he strengthened. Summit was not just where he worked. It was his home, his heart, and his purpose. And I'm happy to say that Jerry was my uncle and Darrell Stevens' father-in-law. So this acknowledgement means a lot to me. So happy Black History Month, Detective Holmes. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, that was well spoken. Awesome. All right, we've got a couple of presentations this evening. The first one is from our Capital Projects and Community Service. We're happy to have Nancy Holmes, our Affordable Housing Council, here, who's going to give our 2024 Affordable Housing Annual Status Report. Thank you for being here.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. The Affordable Housing Committee met last night and held its annual update meeting. This is held in accordance with the city's court-approved settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center, which requires that an annual meeting be held with notice to Fair Share Housing Center and local clergy, where the city can report on its affordable housing efforts from the past year and provide time for public comment and questions. We had a great meeting last night. I believe there were about 40 people that attended by Zoom, full of great questions from the public. And I'm actually adding some information based on those questions tonight into this report. There will be a revised report published, hopefully within the next week, as long as I make sure that everything's reflected that was asked last night, and some changes that we knew we had to make before the meeting. So I'm not going to read the entire report to you because that would be tedious. This is already such exciting subject matter to begin with. So I'm going to add a few things. Under the first quarter, the Common Council adopted a resolution of need supporting the Summit Housing Authority's efforts to apply for HMFA state funding for large-scale renovations to the Summit Housing Authority buildings and units. Ultimately, they did not pursue that funding, but that did occur in the first quarter of last year. The municipal housing liaison, Matt Delory, met with the Summit Civic Foundation to request that their 24 privately-owned affordable units that they keep affordable to households be deed-restricted so that we can use them as credits toward the Mount Laurel program. And they, but they declined that. In February 2024, the council created the Mount Laurel Subcommittee. This is to work on the legal components of round three and round four. It meets regularly and is meeting a lot very soon, since we have a deadline of June 30th to create our new affordable housing plan. Also, in February 2024, we held the 2023 Annual Update Meeting. That was properly noticed and in conformance with the court-approved settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center. And then we also provided the update at the council meeting, which is also required by that agreement. If anyone in the public is looking for any prior annual update reports, they're all online at cityofsummit.org/ah. And this one will be, a revised version of this report will be published there as well. The Summit Affordable Housing Corporation presented a 42-unit, 100% affordable housing project on the old Firehouse site at a council meeting during the public comment period. That was, that proposal was immediately forwarded to the Mount Laurel Subcommittee for review. And you'll see at the bottom of the first quarter where it says that there were meetings scheduled with special needs housing groups, Overlook Hospital, and other entities for possible affordable housing projects. If there is anyone in the public or on the council who knows of a church or another entity that's looking, that has property or would like to further their mission of their church to create affordable units, please let us know. We're always looking for new opportunities. In the second quarter, the members of the Mount Laurel Subcommittee met with the Summit Affordable Housing Corporation about the 42-unit project. The Subcommittee reviewed all of the plans and all of the options and presented recommendations to council. Council ultimately decided to pass on the project and create an overlay zone for the larger area that included several other lots. That overlay has a minimum number of seven affordable units that can be constructed on that site. It can obviously include more. There was also mailing asking landlords if they would wish to deed-restrict their units in exchange for a subsidy to create affordable units out of market-rate units. So far, there's been no interest. Meetings in the second and third quarter were held with Our House, Summit Housing Authority, Rose House, which is a supportive and special needs provider, St. Teresa's, Pilgrim Baptist Church, and the United Methodist Church about possible affordable housing projects. All of those entities are in various stages of whether they're considering affordable housing projects. Pilgrim Baptist Church decided to go another route. In the third quarter, Stephanie Suleos was appointed as municipal housing liaison. And I wanted to give her a large amount of credit. She did a fantastic job in putting all of the, all of the city's unit data and trust fund data into the new affordable housing monitoring system. She and Mark Lackington did a fantastic job, and it was a huge effort. So, and they met the February 15th deadline that just passed, and everything is in now to the DCA, which is a huge task. Because they had, Stephanie had to input every line item from the trust fund since the city started collecting funds. So that was a big deal. So she did a fantastic job, and I wanted to give her a lot of credit for that. In the third quarter, an offer was made to Our House to deed-restrict one of their existing four-bedroom group homes, which was accepted. And in the fourth quarter, the city executed an agreement with Our House, provided a subsidy, and the deed restriction was recorded. So it will remain, there will be four bedrooms deed-restricted for 30 years for special needs individuals in the City of Summit. They are also actively looking, as part of that agreement, for another four-bedroom group home within the city. So if anyone has any ideas, they're looking for property. They do have specific requirements. And they are looking for, Our House does own condominiums throughout the city, and there are several special needs individuals who are getting older and need more of a group home environment rather than living on their own. One of them, I think everyone knows, is Andy. And he, they would like to keep him in Summit, and so this is something that I think Summit citizens can get behind. The state really is very, very low on supportive and special needs units. It's really actually quite a crisis. So if everyone can work together, that would be great to see if Our House can build another group home in town. In the fourth quarter, I'm sorry, the third quarter, the council also passed a resolution defining a clear process for developers when they're approaching the city with projects that include affordable units. We, the Mount Laurel Subcommittee has used this process several times to meet with developers over the past year. In the fourth quarter, the Habitat for Humanity project on 146 Morris Avenue began closing on units. They're still in the process of that. Housing Affordability Service is the state-run administrative agent, and they're the ones that process all of the applications, qualify the households, and execute the closings. So we're hoping that either this quarter or the next quarter, that project is completely full. So that would be great to have all of those units filled. In October of 2024, the DCA released the Round Four numbers in accordance with the new statute that was adopted and signed into law in March of 2024. And the city's Round Four numbers are a 59-unit rehabilitation obligation and a new construction obligation of 345. And as I said before, the meeting was held last night, and it was a great turnout. I did want to note there were some questions about the trust fund balance on page, I believe it's page three. That is just as of December 31st of 2024. It's not meant to be an accounting at all. It's just to show what the balance is, what the expenditures were in December. It's there basically to show the current balance in the trust fund. As I mentioned, Stephanie has input all of the trust fund data into the state system. And I did confirm with Mark Lackington, our administrative agent, that everything is in, the unit monitoring and the trust fund data is in. It's not clear when the public site will be available on the DCA's website to check that information, but that should be fairly soon, we hope. So when that's available, I will make it part of my Affordable Housing update that I do every month and bring it to everyone's attention. And I could ask the public just to check the website. We'll put that monitoring data up as soon as we can. I did want to, I made a few new charts. That is the old one, but I think I sent two new ones. Did they give you those?
That's all I have.
No? Okay. No problem. So that, the chart that's in the report now needs to be updated. We actually had some projects fall out in the last few weeks, and some new projects come to fruition. So I'm just going to review those really quickly. And this is related to the 50-new-unit obligation. So you can kind of see it. Okay, so we have, and also I've added some information that members of the public had asked for last night just to help them understand what type of units we have and what the status of those units are. So we have one unit at 412 Morris. It is a family unit, and it is constructed and occupied. 146 Morris is Habitat for Humanity, as I just spoke about, that is fully constructed, and they are filling the units as we speak. 123 to 127 Summit Avenue, there are three units there. They are family units, and they are constructed and occupied. Ashwood Court is part of the settlement with Habitat for Humanity. That agreement states that up to two units could be built there. They would be in accordance with our settlement agreement if that's how those units get built. They would be family units because we have an obligation of at least 25 of those units to be family units. That is still pending. It's not clear how many units can be built on that site. 557 to 565 Morris is an approved project of seven family units. The Morris and Broad Overlay Zone has a minimum number of affordable units of seven. Those will be family units. And my understanding is that the bidding process will begin soon, in the next couple of months. Our House, as I discussed, is a group home that is constructed and occupied. It is now deed-restricted for 30 years. That's four credits. The credits for group homes are based on the bedroom. So there, it's a four-bedroom unit, so therefore it's four credits. Brandywine Assisted Living Facility is constructed and occupied. They fall under a requirement by the state that at least 10% of their beds be available to Medicaid recipients. So 10% of their facility gives us 10 senior units, which are constructed and occupied. I believe it was constructed in 2021. And within the last week, we had a final, a final unit confirmation of 12 units for a 100% senior, affordable senior project with Bergen County United Way. That's still being finalized as far as legal things and a developer's agreement and those things. So hopefully, we can add more information very quickly. So that gives us a total of 62 out of 50 units toward the 50 new units by July 1st of 2025. And I did want to explain, as I did at the last, at the meeting last night, everyone is focused on the 50 units always, and that's okay. But I did point out last night that the city did have another obligation, which is called the Realistic Development Potential. And that happens, you get your number from on high, and then you adjust it based on how much vacant land that you have. And Summit had a combined realistic development potential, which is, you know, in my jargon, called an RDP, of 36 units. The city fully satisfied that with a 13-unit surplus. So not only has the city now facilitated the construction of 62 out of the 50 that were in our settlement agreement, but we also have 49 credits from our realistic development potential. And those are all constructed and occupied. So I know everyone was focused on the 50, but I wanted everyone to also acknowledge that Summit has created affordable units and a significant amount based on the lack of vacant land that it does have. Those were clarifications that we discussed last night, so I just wanted to bring that to the public's attention as well. So, do you have any questions?
All right, great. Thank you so much, Nancy. I think at this time, I'm going to ask if anyone in the public would like to maybe ask a question of Nancy while she's here, and then we'll open it up for council questions. Anyone from the public?
Is it just questions or is it comments as well?
Comments?
She can answer.
Yeah.
Oh, you can make a comment, too, if you'd like.
Sure.
If you're commenting, keep it to three minutes.
I sure will.
Thank you.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. My name's Helen Boylan. I live at 137 Tulip Street, and I'm a member of At Home in Summit. I first want to just start by recognizing and acknowledging that this council and mayor inherited this problem of getting over the finish line for four months from now. And I appreciate what you've been doing to try to get us over the finish line. And even though you didn't create the problem, And even though you didn't create the problem, I do think you have a responsibility to fix it and do what you can. I, I'm at, I feel like I'm at a great disadvantage, and I said this last night at the meeting, because we don't really have a report that has concrete data. And hearing Ms. Holmes say today what they've done, haven't done, what's family, what's not family, it's not helpful. I need to see numbers in front of me, otherwise I can't really analyze it. I've looked at the data that is available, and I have two concerns about where we are right, well, I have three concerns, actually, but one is 50% of the units under round three are supposed to be family units, so that's 25 family units. And I have counted 14 for sure, and possibly four more at 557, 565 Morris Avenue, which is short of the 25. And also 13% of the 50 are supposed to be very low-income units, that's seven units. And I've only counted one that's done and one that's in the pipeline. So that's deficient by five units at least. So that's, you know, part of the problem is we don't have concrete data, things to look and analyze, and the other part is, from what I've put together, there are deficits. And I also have to note that the recent efforts that you've been putting into getting us over the finish line have involved units for single individuals. The, the project that's proposed by United Way that's listed here, the Our House Group Homes, we desperately need special needs housing and housing for seniors, but we really need housing for families too, and I don't know how we're going to get there if we're just going to do piecemeal little developments. And I just want to also bring to your attention, the main concern that I have right now is with round four. The city's working on the plan right now, that I'm sure that consultants, planners are working on, the fair share plan and housing element, that's got to be done in four and a half months. And part of that, as you know, is the city's been given the number of 345. I'm sure that number's going to be reduced, and part of that is a vacant land analysis. And I feel it's really not serious. If the city's selling the property at Broad Street West while this process is in place, you're going to come to a conclusion there's no vacant land, and there is land that's buildable. And if you're serious about affordable housing, I urge you to hold on to that land, at least part of it, to build housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Just to clarify, 35 of the 50 units are family units in the, in that.
Please, come on. Dennis White, 137 Tulip, thank you. I mean, you know, I spend a lot of time looking at these affordable housing issues, I think you all know, and, you know, tonight we got a report that is totally inadequate, really doesn't let us look at it. This is a report that was distributed by the city clerk on Friday, and then last night we saw a completely different report, and now tonight we're seeing another report. So it's kind of frustrating to come before the group here and try to make some, you know, analysis of what's going on. And I think if you can turn to the trust fund numbers, I mean, this is a trust fund, right? And the city has an obligation to report on the money that comes in and the money that goes out and how that was deployed, and yet we just get this very inadequate balance for the year. And, you know, the city had a year to do this. So, I mean, if you could turn to that page with the trust fund balance, I mean, that's not an accounting of a trust fund for an annual, an annual report. So, you know, I would just urge the council to try to do a better job in preparing this information. Again, we don't know the composition of the units that are coming up, you know, we're, the best we can do is look at the, look at them and think, you know, what, how much are affordable, how much are low-income, how much are family, but the information's not being provided. So I think, you know, this commit, this council has talked about transparency, and we're not getting that. And I, I just would urge you to provide the information. And just one last comment, and I think you heard, is that as we go into round four, the firehouse site is the one remaining site where the city can really make a real impact in affordable housing. And yet, I think the mayor last night and Ms. Holmes just, just re, just said, they're, they're kind of running to get rid of that property, you know, kind of get, want to get rid of it before the June 30th deadline. And I think if this group was really committed, they would hold that and put it into the round four discussion to develop affordable housing in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Comments? All right. Okay, we'll move on then to comments from council. Any comments from council or questions for Nancy? Councilwoman Hamlin.
I would just say thank you all for your comments. I think this is a meaningful day for us because we have spent a lot of time and energy in just trying to facilitate getting to 50. And obviously, we've, we've made progress towards that, but I don't think it ends there. I think, to everybody's point, we have to continue to work together in this progress, and it's really important for all of us to get family units as well. We have another call, I think tomorrow, with Our House, I'm your planning board liaison, so I know Steve Spur is, is very much aligned with, with our vision, especially of providing public input in the fair share housing element plan, and making sure that the desires of the community, such as family units, is, is heard, and you're a part of that. So thank you for coming, and thank you for caring. Appreciate it. And we'll get you those trust fund numbers, I promise. And I think Mark Leckington, I think he actually did them, Rosie.
It's, it's all finished.
Yeah, it's all finished. We'll get them this week.
Like I said, it's a new system, and I asked him today to figure out how to print out for 2024, the trust fund data. He's trying to work on it. It's a brand-new system that DCA had about a couple of months to figure out. They're still working out the, the bugs. There, there's a lot of actually municipalities that still can't even log into the system. So it's been, it's been quite a process. But hopefully soon, based on what Mark said, that hopefully in the next month or so, that there'll be a public interface that, on this, on the DCA's website, so that, that information is readily available to everyone.
Thank you. Other comments from council members? Yes, Councilman Smallwood, please.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, obviously, this is an extremely complicated issue, and for a lot of people to really digest everything that is required, what is talked about in our agreement with Fair Share Housing, including myself, right? So it's extremely difficult to completely understand. So for round three, how many affordable units did we provide?
Okay, so for, for round three, we had the realistic development potential, which is when you take all the vacant land in the city and decide what is suitable for inclusionary development at a presumptive density, and then you come up with this number. So you presume a 20% set aside, so I, I will try very hard not to put everyone to sleep. So you take all of the land, and let's say there is 10 acres, and your minimum density is 10 units an acre, right? So then you calculated that many units, and then you take 20% of that, and that's your, that's how you get your RDP. So, so the, our number is 36. We had 40, 40 actual units, four of which were group home, eight of which were seniors, and the remainder are all family units. That, so that, and then there's a rental bonus that you're allowed on any, to incentivize the construction of family rental units, which we satisfied, which you have a maximum number of nine. So we had a total of 49 credits toward our 36. So we had a 13-unit surplus. So that gets applied to the overall number. Once, once your number is adjusted down, there's this thing called the unmet need. And the unmet need is your number minus your RDP. So that, you try to find areas that will develop and redevelop so that you can capture affordable housing. We have a mandatory set-aside ordinance to capture that, we have overlay zones, we also have developers come in who want to propose projects different places. So we also have what's called a regional contribution agreement with Elizabeth, with the City of Elizabeth, where we paid for the construction of 26 affordable units. That is no longer a mechanism that's allowed, they, they removed that by, the legislature removed that. So then, after that, we, so our unmet need, just to backtrack a little bit, is 702 for round three. We have the 36 RDP, and then we have the unmet need of 702. With the RCA, the surplus, and the credits toward the 50 new unit goal, our unmet need balance is now 601. So we've brought it down 100 units.
So, but in, in round three, we were required to, or it's the, the 50 number unit?
Right.
How many did we create?
We, the, so the requirement is to facilitate the construction of, and obviously, we can't force a developer to, to construct anything. So we, as of today, have facilitated the construction of 62 out of 50. That doesn't mean they're all constructed yet. That means that they're in various stages of either we're getting a developer's agreement finalized for the senior project, there are some that are constructed and occupied, and then there's others that are still in process, so.
So a total of 61?
Two.
62.
Yeah, 62 out of 50.
But only 16 have been created.
So.
Honestly, I'm sorry.
So.
That is not true, but anyway.
According to Fair Share Housing, they're recognizing 62.
We're, we're still working with Fair Share Housing on, on getting them all the, all the information, but they were, they were on the, the meeting last night. They, they didn't comment or anything, but they were there, so.
Okay.
So they, they have all the information.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Other questions or comments from council? I'll just wrap up then. Nancy, I just want to thank you. I know you've been working really, really hard here, and it doesn't help when the state changes their reporting software in the year that they changed the rules for round four. But there you have it. So I know you've been under a tremendous burden to get a lot of this stuff done, and I know you're working really, really hard, and I know you will continue to work very, very hard as we get to the end of June. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I think the feedback from the public was, was good. I, I also see that we do seem to have done over 50% of family units here based off these numbers. But I do think it would be great if we had a category for the very low-income ones on here too, so that we could see that would be great. The only other thought, thing I have is, you know, as you mentioned, we had an obligation to facilitate up to 50 units. So, so we have been, obviously, trying very, very hard to facilitate that, and it's happy to see that it looks like these units have been facilitated, which is great, because I know, you know, Summit has a very long history of promoting affordable housing and continues to do so. Question I have, though, is, you know, some of this stuff, as we've just heard, is, is being, is in the planning stages, and obviously, plans change. So how does this work when plans change? Like, say, say the Morris Broad Overlay, we're putting the seven in there as a minimum. I think all our hopes are whoever does develop the site will have more than that. Does that mean that if, say, that number eventually comes out to 14 units, for instance, which I think would have been the number if the original bid or the original redevelopment plan, if it was a 70 or 80-unit apartment building that was originally thought to be on that space, would have provided, say, we get something like that, where does those extra units go? Do those go to round four, or do they get still stuck in round three because it, does it follow the property, or does it follow how many units get created?
So the new statute requires that municipalities go back and look at their round three plan, and if, like you said, plans change. I have several municipalities where developers have walked away from projects. And so you have to go back and fill a gap in your plan first. And then you take your credits that you have, and you apply them either to your round four plan or to holes in your, holes in your round three plan. So it's a long, convoluted explanation, but we're going, the Mount Laurel Subcommittee is going to look at every single credit, you know, beat, beat down the bushes to find some things that may have been overlooked, and take all of our credits and make sure that they get first applied to round three and then applied to round four, once we do the vacant land analysis.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. That's all I have. All right, with that, Nancy, thank you very, very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
All right. We've got a doubleheader in presentations tonight, which is great. So our second presentation is from Community Programs and Parking Services. David Guida, our assistant director, is going to give a presentation on the Tatlock Playground.
Thank you, Council President. Very excited to be presenting these hot-off-the-press designs tonight. So this is what, what you're seeing right there is what is hopefully coming to Tatlock Playground by, and I keep saying this, if we put this good energy out in the air, it will happen by the end of this year.
Did you turn?
Nope, I didn't. I always have an issue with this. I should know this by now.
Thanks, Nancy.
Okay. So just a little bit of background on how this design was created. So we've been talking about playgrounds for a while now. In June 2022, Suburban Consulting delivered a full playground assessment to us with a $1.3 million estimate for the Tatlock Playground. And looking at all of our playgrounds in town, knowing very well that pretty much all of them need a decent amount of work, we kind of took the analysis and said, hey, each playground needs to have a unique feature that makes it special, makes, gives everybody a destination to go to in Summit. So our Tatlock Playground, we decided on the theme of nature, so everything natural over there at Tatlock. In the spring of '24, along with Mayor Fagan, working with the ideas classes at all of the elementary schools, we solicited feedback from all of these students in those classes, and they gave us some really amazing ideas. In the fall of this past year, we sent out a survey, including many, many, many of the top elements that the students were requesting in a survey, and the survey was sent out also by the Washington School PTO to solicit further feedback on what parents would like to see for their children within all of the playgrounds. November, December of this past year, met with a couple different playground providers to gain information and different ideas. CompMent kind of rose to the top, and we ended up with some pretty cool designs to address a couple of questions that have been raised throughout this process. At Tatlock Playground, there is about 20% of it that is owned by the Board of Education. We are working on, with the Board of Education, on these plans. However, playgrounds apparently at the schools are also becoming a hot button topic. Right now, the Board of Ed's plan is to renovate Jefferson School this year. They then plan on moving on to, hopefully, pending grant funding, redoing the playground at the Brayton Backtop, Blacktop in fiscal year '26. Currently, there are no plans for them to redo the Franklin or Lincoln Playgrounds. Again, those are Board of Ed properties, but just for the completeness of this presentation, thought it was important to mention that because that has become a topic of conversation within these discussions. Purchasing, because I have a feeling that this question would come up, all of the playground equipment is itself on state contracts, so we'll be able to buy it through the state contract, and CompMent also works with an installer who is on the Bergen County Co-op, so we can also have the installation and equipment removal all done through the Co-op, which makes everything easy, don't have to go out to bid on, because they are on these contracts. So kind of just putting up some more images, the playground will have the same existing footprint, same entrances that currently exists, will have the area for the five-to-12-year-olds, the area for the two-to-five-year-olds, and the real highlights of the playground are the Owl's Nest, the Owl, the tree structures, and there's two tree structures there, and also a nature exploration area for the younger children. So just kind of ooh and ah, everybody can look at, ooh, that looks so great. All of these renderings will be available online as of tomorrow, pending a affirmative action that we're good to go with this design, tentatively to begin some fundraising campaigns. So that's the exploration area for the little ones, the tree structure. So that's the exploration area for the little ones, the tree structure, lots of great elements within the playground. And you can see that even with the swings and everything, we're going for that very natural wood look, which is really cool, I think. Bird's-eye view of what the playground will look like. I'm biased, I think it looks great. So now the real fun part to talk about is there is an option A and an option B. Option A comes in at $1.3 million, option B is just over a million. The two options basically work off of each other. Option B, obviously, takes some things out, just kind of included at the bottom of what would be removed and what would be replaced within the playground. So the thought process, basically, why I'm here tonight, is to ask council to say, I know it's not a formal, um, formal action, but to kind of say, hey, yeah, have at it with the fundraising. So currently, we do have $852,000 in funding, pending $500,000 in this upcoming budget cycle. That has not been approved yet, but I know that that has been part of the discussion process. So assuming that that's approved, we have the $852,000, clear distinction there, because it hasn't been approved yet, so I apologize for jumping the gun saying that. But assuming we get that, we would have a fundraising goal of $191,000 for Playground A. To get the full shebang, we would have a fundraising goal of $463,000. Compton has also said that they have other ways that they can reduce the price, especially as we see how the fundraising campaign goes, so we can obviously cross those bridges when we get there. Playground timeline, March through July, and again, the Maybe Playground Project, I think we can all agree, has really taken a life of its own, has moved at a snail's pace. So when we put this on paper and really see how this is going to go, we see that fundraising, it's not going to be a long, drawn-out fundraising campaign. We're going to do some real distinct events where we try to raise some funds for it, a succinct fundraising campaign with BRICS, and also working with local nonprofits. The Elks have expressed a great deal of interest in working with us. They said typically, they can get about $100,000 in fundraising from an event, so that's kind of what has been thrown out there. In May, we would look to probably go out, based on how the fundraising is going, and at least commit to the Owl and the tree play structure, because these items do need a seven-month lead time. So once the budget is hopefully adopted, we'll be able to go out, sign a contract, basically to say, begin constructing these play structures for us. September is when we would need to have all the fundraising done by, so that's why, say, in July, give us a little wiggle room. By September, we would have the full contract, and then by November, December, we could see some construction on the site. So that's it on Tatlock just. I have a feeling that these questions would come up, so just real quickly to breeze through it. Maybe Playground, we're getting there, hopefully by the summer. Right now, we just have an outstanding soil permit. Once we get that, we're going to send everything down to the DEP. The PAR has already been sent for approval, but then the bid specs go down. After we get that done, hopefully in March, April, we'll be getting the bids out and then awarded in April to begin construction as soon as possible following that. And because playgrounds are the hot-button topic, and it gets a little convoluted, because we have three projects going on at the same time, essentially, we've now started applying for grants for the Memorial Playground. So I'll go back to the pretty-looking picture, because that's, that's where we make friends, when people see the nice stuff. So that's, that's it. So basically, what I'm here to ask for is just to say, hey, these designs look great. Good luck fundraising.
Thank you, David. Are there any questions or comments from the public on our playground plan? None? Okay, let's move on to council. Any council comments or questions? Madam Mayor?
Usually don't do this, but, um, so a couple of questions. One is, I know that part of the reason we're having this conversation is because we got to a point with our 20 and 25-year-old playgrounds where we couldn't replace things and we couldn't repair things. So I guess one of my questions is, what's a warranty situation for any of this stuff? And then sort of with that, you mentioned wood, which outdoors in New Jersey feels like a sort of scary concept for something that's going to live outdoors?
So it's not all wood. It's, it looks like wood. It's this recycled plastic material, so it's not the aluminum that you look at on most playgrounds. And, um, what was the first part of the question?
Just a warranty.
Oh, the warranty. There's actually a full warranty page in a presentation that I can circulate to everybody on the main play structures. It's like, it's, there is a lifetime warranty that exists, and then there's...
Who's lifetime?
Exactly. But then there's a bunch of tiers. There's certain things that are five years, 10 years, 15 years, and I think there's a 25-year one as well, so I can circulate that around to everybody.
Thank you.
Other comments? Councilwoman Boyer?
Uh, just one question. So I'd like to remain optimistic, but if we appropriate $500,000 and we don't come up with the fundraising money, what happens then?
We'll just have to scale the project back a little bit, but a playground will be installed by the end of this year.
Whoa.
That's the goal.
Okay, all right.
Other comments or questions from council?
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Smallwood.
I'll be really quick. David, great job, and I would like to give David credit for recognizing the fact that Tatlock mascot is the Owl, and a lot of these renderings, or I guess the final rendering, came from the students of Tatlock. I love the idea of, Wash, I'm sorry, Washington School, elementary school. So I love the idea of, you know, reaching out to the kids who actually use this, and hopefully, you know, at least the second, third, fourth graders will be able to use this next spring. And fifth graders.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Other comments or...
Council President, I just have to point out that I am ashamed, as a Washington Owl, I did not pick up on that.
It's funny, for about a week, I was walking around in the office saying, this Owl, this Owl's so cool, and everybody was just looking at me. What is he on about with this Owl? And I finally had to say, it's the Washington Owls.
It's pretty cool. So I just have one question. What, what do you do on the Owl? I mean, do you climb it? Like, I mean, what is it?
There's act, like, it's, you can climb it, and then there's a rock wall. There's different platforms that you can climb up and down on it, so there's...
There's like a, so there are rock walls on the, the two sides, like those back wings or whatever?
Yep. And then I'm pretty sure that there's actually even a, a small slide on the back of it as well. The, I, when I post the, uh, renderings tomorrow, there's so many pictures of everything, you can see the whole, the whole Owl.
No, very cool. It's good.
Oh. Wow.
Good one, Rosie.
Couldn't resist. All right. With that, thank you very much, David. All right. All right. So that's it for our presentation part of our meeting. We're, we now, we have one, two, three ordinances for hearing and for final consideration. So our first one, Madam Clerk, will you please read our ordinance, the first ordinance for hearing from Safety and Health?
Yes. Ordinance number 25-3331, an ordinance amending the code Chapter 7 Traffic, Section 7-19 Mid-Block Crosswalks.
Thank you very much. Councilman Boyer?
Thank you, Council President. This is ordinance that our esteemed clerk just read, 25-3331, which was introduced at our last meeting and is now before us for a final adoption. This ordinance formalizes the existing mid-block crosswalk at Norwood Avenue and removes a previous approved, previously, excuse me, approved but unconstructed crosswalk at One Springfield Avenue. The rationale for this adoption enhances pedestrian safety, maintains accurate and up-to-date city ordinances, supports efficient city governance. This ordinance has been reviewed and approved by the CAPS Committee and Safety Committee, and has undergone, undergone, excuse me, the proper instruction, geez, I'm off tonight, the proper introduction and public hearing process. At this time, I respectfully move for the final adoption of this ordinance.
We're going to open the hearing.
Open the hearing.
Oh, open the hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I'm going to declare the hearing open. At this point in time, does any member of the public wish to speak on this ordinance? All right, I'm going to close public comments for this ordinance and move along to council person comments. All right, we're going to close the hearing on Safety and Health Ordinance Number One. Moving right along, Madam Clerk, will you please read the ordinance from Community Programs and Parking Services?
Ordinance number 25-3332, an ordinance amending the code Chapter 7 Traffic, Section 7-25 Regulations for the Movement and the Parking of Traffic on Municipal Property and Board of Education Property, subsection 7-25.2 Municipal Parking Lot Areas.
Thank you so much. Councilman Smallwood?
Thank you, Council President. This is, uh, I, ordinance ID number 253332. This is to amend the current ordinance to allow the resident commuters to, to be able to park in the tier garage. Currently, there are, on average, over 50 available spaces each day in the tier garage. It would give us approximately a net increase in resident commuter parking between the Broad Street East Parking Lot and the tier garage. I move to open this ordinance for hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, awesome. All right, I'm going to declare the hearing open. At this time, would anyone from the public like to speak about this ordinance? All right, I'm going to close public comments. Council comments?
I just have a quick one.
Yes, Councilwoman Hamlet, please.
This may be a question that you're all going to laugh at me for, but is there a reason why when we do a hearing for an ordinance, that we just can't, we don't get public comment afterwards? So why can't we just vote on it afterwards?
Because we have to close the hearing.
Right, once we close the hearing, why can't we just go back in and vote on this? Because I feel like we talk about it, and then we do a couple of things, then we go back and we do it again.
It's just because the way our agenda is, much, it's, it's done in sections. So we have ordinances for hearing, then we have ordinance of final consideration. Sometimes we'll have ordinances for introduction. So it's just, we bundle the type of activity that we're, we're talking about.
Does it make sense? Council President, may I?
Madam Clerk knows a lot more about this than me.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Only because I've, I've heard this before from other council members, that it kind of gives you a second to digest what you've just heard. In this case, there are no hearing, there are no comments, but, you know, you close the comments, and then before you vote, you've had a moment to think about it, and that's really...
Okay, I was just curious. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council? All right, I, I would just say, it's, I think it's great that Community Programs and Parking, they're always thinking about utilizing numbers. We are going through a period where with working from home, rideshare, you know, we're going to be dealing with automatic-driving cars at some stage in the future. They're already doing it in San Francisco for cabs, for instance. These, if we're not always looking at how our parking assets are being utilized, then we're going to miss the boat. So I commend Nicole and everyone, and the committee for, for doing this, so thank you. All right, any other comments? All right, I'm going to close the hearing on this ordinance and move on right along to our third ordinance for hearing. Madam Clerk, will you please read the Capital Projects and Community Services ordinance?
Yes. Number 25-3333, an ordinance amending the code Chapter 2 Administration, Article 4, Departments Created, Section 2-14 Department of Community Services.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Hamlet?
Thank you, Council President. This is ordinance 25-3333. This ordinance amends Section 2-14 of the City Code to memorialize changes in the organizational structure of the Department of Community Services. Specifically, this ordinance provides that the department shall be divided into three divisions. The divisions of ear, sorry, the Division of Engineering and Public Works, the Construction Division, and the Land Use Division. This ordinance specifies the functions of each division and provides that in the absence of a Director of Community Services, the head of Division of Engineering and Public Works shall be the Director of Engineering and Public Works, the head of the Land Use Division shall be the head of the Land Use Manager, and the head of the Construction Division shall be the construction official. So essentially, the new department will have three division heads reporting directly to the city administrator. I'd like to introduce this ordinance for hearing. Sorry, open the hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I'm going to declare this hearing open. At this time, any comments from the public on this ordinance? Okay, close that section of the hearing, and we'll go to council comments or questions on this. No? Very good. Seeing none. All right, I'm going to close the hearing, and that has us finishing up our hearings, portion of our meeting. And now we're going on to the, our ordinances for final consideration, which will be the same three ordinances. Madam Clerk, will you please read the ordinance for final consideration from Safety and Health?
Ordinance number 25-3331, an ordinance amending the code Chapter 7 Traffic, Section 7-19 Mid-Block Crosswalks.
Thank you so much. Councilman Boyer?
Thank you, Council President. Having just closed the hearing, I respectfully move for the final adoption of ordinance 25-3331.
Second.
Thank you. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Madam Clerk, will you please read the ordinance for final consideration from Community Programs and Parking Services?
Number 25-3332, an ordinance amending the code Chapter 7 Traffic, Section 7-25 Regulations for the Movement and the Parking of Traffic on Municipal Property and Board of Education Property, subsection 7-25.2 Municipal Parking Lot Areas.
Thank you so much. Councilman Smallwood?
Thank you, Council President. Having just closing, having just closed this hearing on ordinance number ID 25332, I move to open the ordinance for final consideration.
Second.
Thank you. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Toth, Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, our last one. Madam Clerk, will you please read the ordinance for final consideration from Capital Projects and Community Services?
Ordinance number 25-3333, an ordinance amending the code Chapter 2 Administration, Article 4 Departments Created, Section 2-14 Department of Community Services.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Hamlet?
Thank you, Council President. As we just closed the hearing for ordinance 25-333, I would like to open this ordinance for final consideration.
So moved.
Is that a second?
Second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, thank you, everyone. And we'll move right along to our resolution section of our meeting this evening. First up is, there's a couple from Finance. Councilwoman Toth, Finance Number One, please.
Okay, thank you, Council President. This is ID number 11789, authorizing tem, emergency temporary appropriations to the municipal operating budget. The explanation for this resolution and the immediately following one are essentially the same. Until we pass the 2025 budget, the city is operating under the temporary municipal operating budget that council passed on January 7th. And that budget allows the city to spend 26.25% of the 24, 2024 budget, line item by line item. And in the real world, expenses don't flow evenly throughout the year, much less throughout a quarter. So some expense more at the beginning of the year on some of the, some of the budget items, and the only way to authorize this needed spending is via this resolution. We're required to call it an emergency, but it's standard operating procedure. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Thank you very much. Do I have any comments from the public on this resolution? Comments from council? All right, I believe we have to have a roll call on this?
Yes. Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, on to Finance number two. Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID 11773, authorizing emergency temporary appropriation to the sewer utility budget. This is the same situation as with the immediately preceding resolution on the municipal operating budget. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Thank you. Comments from the public? Comments from counsel? All right, roll call on this one as well, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, Finance number three. Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 11767, authorizing the city to approve the documentation needed for capital improvements to the joint meeting. This and the immediately following resolution cover the same situation, so I'll explain them together. The joint meeting is essentially a co-op sewage treatment facility of which Summit is part owner. It's existed for about 100 years, is very well-run, and is even more cost-effective. Part of what keeps it so well-run is that the joint meeting has a biannual capital improvement project. And for a variety of reasons, the 2019 capital improvements were not completed. They're happening this year, and the joint meeting is issuing bonds with the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank to fund them. I bank loans tend to be very low-cost, and Summit's share is $720,000. This resolution authorizes Summit to enter into the agreements necessary to issue its share of the overall bonds. And the next resolution authorizes the issuance of the bonds themselves. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Comments from the public? Comments from counsel? I just have one comment. Again, this is something, I think Councilwoman Toth said it, we pay a share of the expenses from the joint meeting. We are an equity holder. The way they allocate our share is based off of what we send there. Without getting too into the weeds, it's the flow that goes in there. One of the things I know Director Shager's worked very, very hard on is our storm water management system. It's to keep rainwater out of our sewer system. Because if it gets in there, we get charged for it. It becomes flow. So we've done a really, really good job, I know, over the last several years, decade really. I know, Aaron, you've focused on this. And it pays real dividends, because it means our cut of all these expenses goes down, which is awesome. So thank you for that. Okay. Any other comments? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Let's go to Finance number four. Councilwoman Toth.
Okay, thank you, Council President. This is ID number 11765, authorizing the city to issue up to $720,000 worth of bonds to fund the joint meeting capital improvements, as explained above. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Thank you. Comments from the public? Comments from counsel? Okay, another roll call, I believe.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, moving along, Finance number five. Councilwoman Toth.
Okay, thank you, Council President. This is ID number 11765, authorizing the city to extend the deadlines for the municipal budget. The default date for introducing the budget is February 28, and that's, as a practical matter, unworkable. The budget can't be readied for submission until after the prior year's books are closed and the municipal annual financial statement is prepared. That whole process takes several weeks, and there just isn't enough time to do it all. So, with absent the state legislature amending the statute to comport with reality, each year the Division of Local Government Services extends the various deadlines. And this year, the extended deadlines are March 7 for submitting last year's annual financial statement, March 31 for submitting the 2025 budget, and April 30 for adopting it. Given the myriad of rules and regulations governing municipal budgets, we need this extra time. I move to adopt the resolution.
Second. Thank you. Comments from the public, please? Comments from counsel? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last, Finance number six. Councilwoman Toth.
Okay, thank you, Council President. This is ID number 11770, authorizing us to request bids for IT services. For some years, Summit has had a shared services agreement with Madison, with one person working for both municipalities. Effective July 1, that person will work for Madison full-time, and we need a new contract in place with sufficient time for the transition. This resolution authorizes us to advertise for the IT services. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. All right, any comments from the public? Comments from counsel?
Council President.
Councilwoman Hamlet?
Sure. Thank you, Council President. As Councilwoman Toth just mentioned, we will be severing the relationship with the shared services with Madison. I think as we depart this relationship, we should have some discussions around whether or not we want to pursue another shared services with another municipality. I think in the meantime, we have an incredibly talented group of residents on the Information Technology Committee. Councilwoman Toth and I, hopefully by the end of this week, we've been super busy, will have our first technology meeting in the next week or two. Historically, this committee hasn't met very often. But I think we really just have to think about, you know, what does it mean to have a digital strategy for Summit? What do the residents want? What do we have today? What are inclusive of the services? What are the roadblocks? Ultimately, what is the bigger strategy? And I spoke with our city administrator today, and it sounds like those wheels are already in motion. She's taking a deep dive into all of the services, seeing what the redundancies are, speaking with all the technology, speaking with all the department heads. And I think ultimately, we may find some redundancies, and that's a good thing, right? It'll ultimately save taxpayer dollars, and we have a ton of residents who can streamline this process. So I think it's a really exciting time to evaluate all of our systems and streamline the processes.
Great, thank you. Councilman Boyer?
Thank you, Council President. In addition to what Councilwoman Hamlet had said, we actually had a meeting this morning to talk about something that's dear and near to me, which is cybersecurity and our cybersecurity posture, inclusive of, you know, IT services. And I'm in agreement that we need to look at this holistically. There have been other municipalities in recent news, you know, ransomware is a really serious thing, and we need to look at whether shared services is something that Summit wants to do, or if Summit needs some in-house security posture, especially these days, that can also provide IT services for e-discovery and different things. So I think, I just want to thank our business administrator and our mayor for taking these matters very seriously. Sometimes, especially in the corporate world, cybersecurity is kind of the last thing that gets funded until something happens. So I'm very happy that we are doing this right now. And I think, at the end of the day, we'll leave Summit in a very secure situation. So thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're moving along to safety and health. Resolution number one, Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID 11782. This authorizes the purchase and installment of a new surveillance camera system at City Hall. This resolution is brought forward to replace the existing surveillance system, which is nearing the end of its operational life and is no longer under warranty. The new system will not only improve security at City Hall, but also provide the tech or technological foundation to expand the city's surveillance network into key areas, including parking garages, the central business district, and additional municipal locations as needed. This project is fully funded through the previous capital accounts. And with this, I move this resolution for adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Comments from the public?
Welcome. I don't know how I did this for six years. Don't start my clock yet. It's amazing commitment, what all you're doing. Before I left tonight, I was just calculating with my wife, a three-year term on council is about 200 minimum mandatory meetings that you need to go to. Six years is 400, so do the math. And there's about a couple hundred more after that. So I do thank you for all this. And I've only been back here, I think, twice. This being my second time, so. Now you can start my clock.
Name and address, don't forget.
Yeah, well, my name is Pat Hurley. My address is 192 Ashland Road, Summit, New Jersey. So just a couple of comments on this, and I do thank Councilman Boyer for spending a lot of time listening to me, because this is something that's near and dear to me, because I've been involved with security, security technology, security assessments, security programs, complex assessments all over the world for the last collectively about 20, 25 years, especially with artificial intelligence and AI, et cetera, video analytics and everything that we're looking to lay the foundation for, and this being the first step in it. I think this resolution, with the resolution, I really do applaud the vision and the city's efforts to update the existing security infrastructure here and establish the, you know, the foundation, as implied in the documents and what Councilman Boyer just said, for the integrated video system powered by advanced AI in the downtown. But that's a significant undertaking, and I think that must be carefully planned and designed. The specific resolution that you're voting on tonight, I only see an invoice asking for council to approve about $110,000 on security cameras, nothing more. The proposal from the vendor, although it's fairly typical from the industry, is sloppy. It's kind of fraught with project and technology risk, I think, for the city. For example, I see a reference to a firewall, but I don't see any references to existing or required new switching to power the cameras or the necessary bandwidth for the data. Second, I see the common industry disclaimer on cabling, which forces the city to assume the project risk and additional expense of running new cables should the existing ones be incompatible. This analysis should have been completed before the job was quoted, not added as a disclaimer to the invoice. Third, there is no camera schedule or map depicting what types of cameras will be deployed and where, or why a particular camera was selected for each location, and how it is expected to perform versus manufacturers' published specifications. Additionally, there is no power or storage budget presented to demonstrate the criteria used by the vendor to select the devices, determine the required network configuration, cable type, and cable runs. I could go on, but in the interest of time, I won't. I think a vigilante cameras are fantastic, but I think this proposal is sloppy, and it's not clear if the city is getting the best possible benefit for the taxpayer dollars being spent. Additionally, this proposal does not demonstrate how the project is laying the foundation for the proposed future expansions, but it does highlight a more important issue. Council has done some great things in public safety, along with the police, the mayor, and everybody over the last year. But this idea of the expanded security infrastructure throughout the city, you know, it is the next logical and the most intelligent step. Going forward, it's extremely important the city develops a detailed plan and establishes clear requirements for the selection and integration of the new public safety infrastructure. Can I have 20 more seconds?
You've got to wrap it up.
Okay. Most importantly, we should learn from our Joint Dispatch Center effort, which is clearly a disappointment, with founding participating municipalities, including Summit, looking for alternatives after less than 10 years in operation, and basically a $1 million grant wasted. And I will stop with that.
Thank you, former Councilman Hurley, and thank you for all your service on the council in the past. And your comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. All right, thanks, everybody.
Other comments from the public?
Council President, if he has a statement.
Oh, Mr. Hurley, if you have, if that's a written statement, could you please forward it to the clerk?
I can, sir. Thank you very much.
Other comments from the public? All right, comments from counsel. Councilwoman Hamlet?
Thank you, Council President. I have to say, I called Councilwoman Boyer today, and my comments were, it's a $100,000 or so contract, why is the labor so high? Why is the labor not detailed out? And the other couple of questions, and this all goes back into IT, right? As a councilperson, you're not exactly supposed to know what a $15,000 port is, but when you see two of them on your bill list in the same week, and you see $100,000 worth of cameras, you start to ask some questions, and just so that you understand what you're actually voting for. And my question today was, you know, is it okay to do a purchase order for this? And of course, it was okay, because it was a state contract. But I was struggling, and Jemel, this is, I was just struggling with not having the big picture around, you know, where exactly are these cameras going? And, you know, are we getting, why are we paying so much for labor? And Jemel explained it to me, well, we're taking all these cameras down. But I think going forward, if the departments could give a better, clearer understanding and just truly walk us through exactly where the cameras are going. And this also goes back into, I think, having our technology committee or person who's handling that, just take a look at this. Because to Mr. Hurley's point, a lot of these cloud-based services could be shared, they could be overlapping. You know, are the two ports here tonight that we're spending, you know, $28,000 on, are they going to be able to support all of this equipment? So I would have liked a little more information, but I am comfortable that, I'm sure the department did their work. But I was struggling with the invoice as well. I just thought there wasn't enough detail. I looked them up all day today. It's CTMB. I literally looked them up in the cooperative purchasing, because I thought the purchase order, or the receipt, whatever you call it, was, I agree, it wasn't enough detail.
Thank you. Other comments?
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Boyer?
First, I want to thank former Councilman Hurley for all of his advice. We've had multiple different conversations about drones and everything else, and cameras. And the councilman is a subject matter expert. I mean, he knows more about cameras and, you know, ports. And, I mean, it's really outstanding, and I enjoy our conversations. And it actually really equips me to go back to the police department and follow up on these matters. First, the Summit Police Department will do a camera master plan this year and lay this all out, what our future posture will be for our AI cameras. This is amazing technology. When I was down at the League of Municipalities, I saw a demo on what these cameras can do, and it is absolutely astonishing. And this will certainly equip our police department with next-level type response, surveillance, evidence collection, all types of things. Secondly, with this funding, this came from several years ago, from a capital expense. I don't know if the business administrator would like to opine on that, but this was in a previous capital budget, and it was coming to the end where we needed to actually make this purchase and start this process. So this initial purchase will be replacing the cameras. So the cameras that are up, they'll be replacing them. So we could put a diagram where the cameras are now, which I don't think we should make public anyway, by the way. Also, the technology that's involved, we could lay that out, right? I think you would probably need several manuals to read, even to understand the schematics of it, if we want to get into the granular detail. This company that the city of Summit uses is one of the same companies that was involved in our LPRs. We are, we know them, we trust them. They actually came to City Hall, they looked at all of our infrastructure, they looked at the cables and everything, so I feel comfortable with that. But I think what's really important, though, and the former councilman pointed this out, this out, is that we do need a, we do need a plan. We can't just put up cameras, say, hey, in the parking garage or the park line, and we just put them up. No, we, we actually have to do what makes sense. We have to plan this out strategically, uh, because these cameras can be used in a very strategic way, but they have to be in the right places. So this year, we will, the police department will be taking their time. Like how we do a master plan for the city, we're going to be doing a master plan for our cameras. And, um, I personally, uh, will be seeking some advice from some of our subject matter experts. I won't name who they are, uh, but I'm sure that we'll be in conversation so that the city is left with the, with the best strategic, uh, AI posture that, uh, can be incorporated. And just one, one next thing, last thing. We have a new firehouse, right? Just think about a future where all of this technology leads into one hub, where our, um, where our emergency management, uh, um, hub is, right? So you have your police department, your fire department, you have your mayor there, and we're, there's a storm, and we're looking at all these cameras. What about Morris Avenue? What's going on in Springfield? What's, and it's all populated, and you can follow things, you could type things in. Hey, there was a car that's missing, right? We don't know, it got blown off the side, you type it in, the camera follows the car or something. I mean, this is like next level stuff. It really, I mean, it really is. So, but we want to make sure everything feeds in the right area, um, and, and do it right, so, uh, I'll, I'll leave it at that, though. But I'm fully in support of this initial plan to start.
Thank you. Other comments. Councilwoman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. Um, obviously, Councilman Boyer, I'm certainly going to defer to you and, uh, Councilwoman Kalmison, since this is your committee, um, but I, I just have to, I have to ask for my own personal, you mentioned a master plan, and, uh, former Councilman Hurley's, uh, comments, um, is this something that we should hold off on till we do the master plan? Or is this the beginning of the master plan? I'm just thinking, would it be more cost-effective to put the master plan together and then purchase the cameras?
So the problem with that is that the existing cameras that we have right now are, there, there are no warranty on them, uh, and they're expiring. They have, their operating life has ended. So if we don't replace these cameras, I think that, um, that would impact our current security posture, so we need to move forward. And also, I believe these are capital funds from several years ago, um, and I can defer to our business administrator, if we don't use these funds, I believe they have to go back or, um, but I think the main goal is that we need to really replace our cameras, and why not replace them with the next level of technology, right?
I don't know, um...
Through you, Council President?
Yes, please, Ms. Boyer.
Um, I, I don't recall exactly, it was either twenty-two or twenty-three when this was, uh, first brought up by the police department, um, that we were coming to the end of life on the current system. Um, so it took some time for them to obviously vet out what was the best way to go. Um, here we are, the funds won't expire, um, however, the cameras will. As we can see, they're nearing the end of their life. This was a, uh, suggestion and recommendation by the police department. These cameras, uh, if I recall, I can remember them talking about it because it was interesting, but this is the first step in being able to get cameras into other locations within the city, getting them into our parking garages, for example, getting them into the park line. So this is just the beginning. Um, the master plan of cameras is coming, but this step needs to be taken so that we can evolve and grow the system, if you will.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hamlet.
My only ask would be, um, if we could table it for one more meeting, would it be, would it be that, um, would it be a tragedy? I, I have looked into the, the price of the cameras and, and received advice from a few people that the, the price of the cameras is very high, and I'm not sure if that's correct or not, but I guess my question is, just because we have a state contract, that may not be the best price. I mean, that, that truly, just because it's a state contract doesn't mean that we're getting the lowest price, it's just not true.
Council, Council President?
Right?
Well, let me just opine real quick, so...
Ladies, Councilwoman Boyer.
There was a vendor that initially gave us a quote for these cameras, and it was way overpriced. And Ajay, who's our IT, um, our IT personnel, looked at it, right? And then we went with a second vendor, which is the vendor that we're, we're with right now, and the price was substantially, uh, lowered. Um, so if tabling it tonight means that, um, you're going to effectively go out and try to find another vendor to get these cameras, um, I think the vendor that we have right now, and the cameras that we have right now, and the, um, the legwork that the police department has already put in is sufficient. Uh, I, I, I would defer back to Councilwoman Hamlet. I mean, if you believe that tabling it now and, uh, taking the time to go out and doing, um, some other legwork with someone else, you know, other than the police department that's already done it, um, I, I don't know.
I guess, my question is, you know, when were the other, so we didn't bid it out, right? It was just we got another quote from another state contract vendor? Is that how it works? I'm just not privy to that information, so I don't know.
Through you, Council President. I don't know where the first quote came in, uh, but we were able to find and direct it to the state contract. If you want to go out to bid, we have to prepare bid specs. This is over the forty-four thousand, so if you don't use a state contract, you do have to go out to bid, you do have to prepare the bid specs for it, you do have to leave it up, you have sixty days to award, so we're, we're probably looking at a few months before we can, I don't know what the impact of that would be on the system currently running, but you're definitely looking at a few months before you could award if you're going in a different direction. Or even looking into it and accepting bids and then throwing them out, it's still a lengthier process.
Uh, respectfully, I've had a long, two-hour conversation with Captain Peters about this, and, um, I trust his judgment that we had a vendor, the price wasn't good, we went to another vendor, and, um, he had searched the market for these cameras. So, um, at this point, respectfully, I would be voting against tabling this, so I just wanted to say that.
Well, there's, there is no motion to, to table yet.
Just pointing out what, what my vote would be.
Yeah, um, okay. Uh, other comments from council?
I'd like to make a motion to table.
Okay. All right, there's, so there's a motion to table? Do I have a second? Okay, so hearing no second, we're going to move along. Um, I have, I have just a couple of comments. One, one's a question, so I, I think the, well, I have two questions. The first one I think has been answered, so this, these cameras are just replacing existing cameras. We're not adding any cameras, and we're replacing on a one-for-one basis all the cameras that we have now.
That's, that's correct, Council President.
Okay, great, um, great. Second question is, um, this, this cable, coaxial cable issue that, uh, former Councilman Hurley brought up, if it's not compatible, do we have funds available to change out the cables?
Council President, I was told by the police department, by Captain Peters, that they came in and they actually looked at the cords, and they, that was my question to Captain Peters, um, in that, uh, the equipment is, um, compatible with what's going to go in. And he actually also reassured me that this vendor, quote unquote, doesn't do any funny business. You know, they, they, they say what they say, and they, they do what they do. So, um, I think if there is an issue somewhere down the road where they come in and say, uh, this is not, this, this cable is not compatible, um, I think we have some other business that we would be maybe possibly not doing with them in the future, so, uh, yeah.
Okay, fair enough. Um, yeah, um, dealing with, you know, approved vendors, you know, a lot of the legwork and vetting has, has been done, and again, I, I, I chair Councilwoman Hamlet's desire to get the best price on things, absolutely, so I, I'm, it, as an aside, I've seen no one dig into numbers like you do. So thank you for keeping to do that. Um, but I, I do trust Captain Peters, uh, for really, uh, doing the work on this, and this is, um, I guess it could always be better. Uh, that being said, um, I know this is a replacement, and I'm happy to hear that there's going to be a master plan, although the little part of me that self-identifies as a libertarian is a little worried about this stuff. We have cameras that watch us as we walk around, uh, in the community. I know that's reality, but it still kind of freaks me out a little bit, um, that I'm always being watched. But I do know it's an important part of keeping communities safe, and the technology, um, is changing and getting more amazing every day, so, um, I, I do support this, so, okay. Uh, other comments?
I have another question.
Yes, Councilwoman?
So where's the warranty information on this? Maybe the chief can answer the questions, because the one, um, the one reason for suggesting that we change these cameras out, uh, is that the warranty was up, so I was wondering if maybe the chief could speak to that, because I don't see the warranty information in here. I just want to know if it includes a warranty, because the quote doesn't include a warranty, I don't think. I don't see the warranty for the cameras.
The warranty on the expired cameras or the new cameras?
No, the new cameras.
Oh, okay.
Because one of the reasons that the, the memo says the, there are no longer warranties on our camera, but I don't see a warranty plan for the current cameras that the vendor is recommending.
Chief?
The replacement, they're not replacing them because the warranty's out. The warranty is out on the cameras that we have, they're replacing them because I think we're at maybe sixty percent working. Um, that's, that's the reason, not, not that we're anticipating them going down, they are down, uh, a good portion of the cameras that we, that we presently have.
I guess one of the questions that Councilwoman Hamlet had, though, was these new cameras are under some sort of warranty, uh, is your understanding?
Oh, yeah, of course.
Okay, but we just don't know whether it's two years, three years, whatever. What's that?
I can answer that. Mr. Bluth?
Yeah.
Is this proper?
Not really.
The Vigilant, well, the Vigilant equipment is a two-year warranty, which is one of the lower ones in the industry, but they're also some of the best cameras in the industry, so it's kind of a trade-off. Um, my only, so that, I think that answers your question. I just did a huge project on this, so I know, um, in Ohio. Um, the issue is that as soon as you buy the cameras, which is tonight, that clock may start ticking, and you got to be very careful about that, because I've had cameras sitting on the shelf for a year, year and a half, and the client gets them and they're mad because they only have six years or so. But that answers the warranty question, it's two years. But you should have put that in, like, your point.
Thank you. Okay, other comments from council?
And I will charge it for that.
All right, um, all in favor?
Well, we have a motion to table. I have a motion to table.
I know, but we didn't have a second.
Oh, we didn't have a second? Nobody's seconding?
Yeah, right, so the motion didn't pass. Um, all right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, uh, Councilwoman Boyer, safety and health, I understand you might want to bundle two and three?
Yes, so, thank you, Council President. I'm going to bundle resolutions one-one-seven-five-seven and one-one-seven-five-nine, uh, which formally declares six vacancies, if you bundle them together, within the police department due to the upcoming retirement of our esteemed chief, uh, Stephen Zagorski, on April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, and the subsequent promotions, uh, that will follow in addition to the retirement of one police officer, so that would make it six. Uh, I would like to, uh, move this resolution for adoption.
Uh, yeah, they're both, both the resolutions.
These resolutions.
Excellent. Okay, uh, comments from the public? Comments from council?
Yes, Council President, uh, just want to make one statement. When I read the chief of police, uh, retirement letter, uh, I got to tell you, I was moved, um, and I called him right away. It is, when, when you, when you serve for, uh, over three decades, it's, leaving a job is, uh, is tough. Um, I'm sure the chief, as, as a detective, solved many of the crimes, saved lives, uh, his devotion to the city has been tremendous, and it is, uh, it is, it is heartwarming. Um, and I just want to, uh, thank the chief for his service, and we will be recognizing him fully at a later date, absolutely. Uh, but thank you, chief. I appreciate you.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Chief, you missed what I said earlier, so I'll send you a note. No, thank you for your service, and, and obviously, um, it will be a void, but we are in good hands, you have made sure of that, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Other comments from council? Councilwoman Hamlet?
Just like to say thank you, chief, for all, all your hard work, your dedication, your services to Summit. Um, you, you work and, and lead the department in such a respectable way. Uh, we're honored to, to have you for so many years, and, uh, just thank you for your service. Sorry, I voted no against your cameras tonight. Um, but thank you very much.
Other comments from council? I would just say ditto to that. I know we're going to, uh, have a, a larger, uh, retrospect of your career and all your service to, uh, to Summit chief, but, um, I know on today we're announcing it, and, and I want to say thank you as well for everything you've done for our community. Um, all right, uh, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, uh, safety and health, number four, Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, I move to adopt resolution ID number one-one-seven-five-eight, which authorizes the appointment and promotion of Detective Kathleen Majuli to the rank of sergeant effective February twentieth, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, this resolution, um, excuse me, uh, Detective Majuli is one, is it, sorry, Council President, I got my, uh, my notes, we've bundled things up here. Uh, Detective Majuli has demonstrated the necessary qualifications, skills, and experience to effectively assume the responsibilities of the position. Her promotion will ensure that the department maintains its current staffing levels within the rank of sergeant. Uh, the rationale for this adoption, promoting Detective Majuli ensures that the police department maintains adequate supervision and leadership within its ranks. Uh, I want to be clear about this. This is a merit-based promotion. Detective Majuli has undergone rigorous testing, evaluation, and has proven her performance and experience, and I have to say, I've interviewed for my, in corporate, and even in the city, I've interviewed, you know, dozens of people, and during, uh, Detective Majuli's interview, she blew me away. Uh, she is the most, most qualified for this role, uh, that personally I've, I've ever seen. Um, I, I am actually honored, uh, to be reading this, and I'm honored to be a council member to promote, uh, the first female, uh, that will be the highest-ranking, um, uh, police officer in Summit's history, and that is an honor to be reading this. So, um, with enthusiasm and respect for Detective Majuli, I move this for a final adoption.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? Yes, please, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I am also very honored to be a part of this. Uh, I'm excited to, uh, to swear Kathy in, Officer Majuli in tomorrow at four PM, that is the schedule. We weren't allowed to talk about that until, um, well, we, as long as everybody approves of this. Yes, I'm jumping the gun, sorry, Rosie, um, but, uh, four o'clock tomorrow, as long as everyone approves, um, we will be swearing Kathy in as the most senior-ranking female in the history of the Summit Police Department, so that feels really great for our city. Thank you.
Really does, thank you. Other comments? Yes, Councilman Smallwood?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, yeah, I've, I've known, um, Kathy for a very long time, uh, working on the, the PAL, and, you know, it's, not only does she do her paid job as an officer extremely well, but she also came to all of our PAL meetings every month, and, which is not paid time, that's all her volunteer time. And I don't know if I should share this information or not, but one of the most important jobs that she did on the PAL was she was the Easter Bunny.
I was going to say that. There are pictures.
Right, so, I hope... Right. So I hope, I hope she'll still, I don't know if she still is. I haven't been on the PAL. She was awesome. So I hope.
Oh.
So Kathy, I hope that you'll be able to choose your successor and as the PAL bunny for, for that group. And I wanted to thank you very much for all of your volunteerism that you've done for the PAL and support. And I look forward to being at your confirmation, swearing in for tomorrow.
Thank you, Councilman Smallwood. Other comments? All right. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Moving along to Capitol Projects and Community Services, Resolution Number One, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution 11708. Whereas the Director of the Department of Community Services advises the Kent Place School has expressed the desire to have the city install a rapid rectangular flashing beacon at the existing mid-block crosswalk at Norwood Avenue that connects, I think we have Oak Knoll in here, but that might be a Scribner's error.
We've already corrected it.
Okay. That connects Kent Place School parking lot as well as the intersection of Norwood and Sherman. These flashing beacons do not currently exist at these locations. And I would like to move this resolution.
Second.
I hear, comments from the public? Comments from council?
Just one comment.
Yes, please, Councilwoman Boyer.
These rapid rectangular flashing beacons will be donated by the Kent Place School, correct?
Yes. Thank you. Sorry, I shouldn't mention that.
Just want to point that out.
Yes. So that is a great thing.
Absolutely.
So, other comments from, just wanted to, one question. Are, so are these going to be installed in the, the new crosswalk that we just approved today as the, that's what my understanding is, right?
Yep.
Okay. So that's great. Wow, the city's efficient. You approve it and then we get the beacons in, which is awesome. So couldn't have worked out better. That's great.
I was actually thinking why we didn't bundle it. I was.
Yeah. All right. Any other comments?
My only other comment was I think that, and we've talked about this a ton, but I love, I would love to see safety take on all of the crossing rapid flashing beacons. This one's okay because we can kind of explain it, but I think it's important for going forward. If you could do these, it's helpful because then we actually know why we're putting them in and what were the safety, if we can possibly do them. I'm happy to do them, but I have to spend two days asking you why we are doing it. But this one is an easy one.
And Council President?
Yes.
Just to comment on Councilwoman Hamlet's comment. I should have read this, you know. I, so next time, I'll read it so I can.
Correct my grammar.
Wordsmith it. But thank you. Thanks for the comment. I agree with you. It should go to safety.
Yeah. All right, great. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Capitol Projects and Community Service, number two, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Yes. Sorry, I'm just pulling this up here. Apologize. Yes, this is Resolution ID 11778, which is authorizing, sorry, authorizing the execution of a sanitary sewer easement agreement on 71 Pine Grove Avenue. The owner of 71 Pine Grove Avenue submitted an application to the City Zoning Board of Adjustment. During this process, it was discovered that an existing city sewer, sanitary sewer line traversed the property, but that no formal sewer easement exists. As such, the department requested one to be created, and this is included in memorializing the resolution for the project. I would like to move this resolution to the council.
Second.
Thank you. Comments from the public? Comments from council? All right. Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Capitol Projects and Community Services, number three, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Yes. Sorry, I had a question in my mind, but I'm just going to move ahead. Aaron doesn't kill me. This is ID 11774, authorizing the state contract purchase of spatial data logic SDL through Dell Marketing and the purchase price of $54,900. For those of you who don't know, this is the, Aaron could probably explain it better, but our system that handles, basically it's the brain of DCS and engineering for all permits and important data within the city that we use all day, every day. So I'd like to move this resolution.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Capitol Projects, number four, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID 11745, as discussed in closed session, which will declare a vacancy in the Department of Community Services, Division of Public Works, Roads Unit Lead Foreman. I'd like to move this resolution.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. And then Capitol Projects, number five, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Yes. Thank you, Council President. This is ID 11792, declaring a vacancy in the Department of Community Services, Land Use Division, Land Use Assistant Planning and Zoning Board Secretary. I'd like to move this resolution.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Councilwoman Toth, you're doing double duty tonight.
I know. I'm back.
Right. Law and Labor, number one, please.
Okay. Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 11780, amending the professional services agreement with our special counsel. In the first part of 2024, the attorneys representing the city in the Broad Street West litigation emailed the bill for $18,831.68 to the former city administrator. And that bill was never forwarded for payment. It sort of disappeared into the ether. The law firm only followed up on it this year. We owe the money and therefore we need to amend the agreement. So I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Second.
Oh, sorry. All right. Comments from the public? Comments from council? Councilwoman Hamlet?
So, Councilwoman Toth, so this is going to, this is changing the not to exceed, but it was an old bill? Is that correct?
Right, right. It was an old bill that was never paid.
So that, because that's what I was wondering. So that's why we have to change his not to exceed for this year?
Correct. Well, it's for last year.
For last year.
We're still fixing 2024.
Okay. If we could just get, maybe during budget season, just a total cost of, I guess, the litigation costs. It doesn't have to be now, but just curious. We don't have to do it now, but at some point when you catch up your breath, Tammy, it's not urgent. No, next week is fine. But thank you for explaining that.
Yeah. Well, it's just got $18,000 more expensive. So, yeah. Any other comments from council? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Law and Labor, number two, Councilwoman Toth.
Okay. Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 11154. Per the closed session discussion, this resolution, excuse me, confirms the mayor's appointment of a municipal, municipal court judge, and I will let the mayor take it from here.
Thank you, Councilwoman Toth. So Judge John Demasi has been our municipal court judge for several terms. It's a three-year appointment and I am going to, I recommend that we reappoint Judge Demasi.
Okay. And thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? Just one comment, just, I think you said this, this is a reappointment. So this is how many years?
Three years.
So the appointment's for three?
Correct.
And Judge Demasi served as our municipal judge since when?
I can't remember. I think this might be his fourth three-year term.
So the last?
If you recall, it's either his third or his fourth.
I think it's his third.
His third.
So he's been municipal judge for the last six years?
That's correct.
Good. Okay. Thank you. Other comments? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We are now at the consent agenda portion of our meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Do I have any member of the public who wishes to comment on the consent agenda? Any comments from council?
Council President, just one comment. This bill here for the shared dispatch center, this 1 million, 1.4, I'll round off. I just want to let the public know that the safety committee is working, working hard on finding a solution to our, our dispatch for the future. So I know this seems like a high-dollar amount, but we are, I think that we are all have a, it's a promising future that we can get this number down big time. So we're working on that. Our fire department, our police department, and our business administrator, and even with, combined with the city of Melbourne, we're all looking at it to, to reduce this cost.
Thank you. Other comments from council? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda passes. All right. We are now at the public comment section of our meeting. If there are any members of the public who'd like to comment on anything that wasn't on, oh, and Mr. Schreger, you may leave. Thank you. Thank you for coming and staying. If any member of the public would like to comment on something that's not, was not on the agenda, now is your opportunity. Passes. Okay. I'm going to close public comment section of our hearing. We're on to council members' comments and new business. Any council member like to say anything? Comment?
I'll be quick.
Councilwoman Hamlet?
I promise I'll be quick. I just wanted to update the community. We have a meeting with Bristol Myers Squibb on Friday with the mayor. I think Councilmember Hamilton may be attending as well. We've been hearing some complaints recently from the residents around Bristol Myers Squibb. So I've been speaking with them for the last few weeks. Some of the issues down there are humming from the air conditioning systems and there's also been some complaints about the backup noise alarms in snowplows. So there's been a bunch of residents who've been looking into OSHA-compliant broadband noise level for backup alarms, which I think is interesting. I've been working with the DEP Noise Control Council to get further guidance on not only that issue, but bedrock drilling up in, up near Oak Ridge. And they've been really, really helpful. Spoke with Michelle Fiesel, who's on the noise council, and they've been, they've even, we've even been discussing the gun range. So we've been hearing a lot of residents complaining about those. And I've found the noise council to be really valuable and never really thought I'd be into a noise council, but they're some of my new favorite people. So I'm looking forward to reporting back to the community. Bristol Myers Squibb has been kind enough to have us. So looking forward to doing that. Couple of quick updates. Ashland, the survey, Ashland Sidewalk, the survey was recently received. It's my understanding that concept plans will be developed by the end of March, beginning of April. We will also be scheduling another meeting with the residents of Canoe Brook, hopefully in March. There are some funds for 2025 for sidewalks in the amount of about $150,000. And then the last thing I would say is I think that it's important, Council President, I'm just looking for some guidance for you, from you regarding the Salt Brook. I think that having a conversation as a line item in the budget is not the best way to handle. I think we should put it on the council's agenda. I've had it in committee, still a little stuck on what to do, and I think it's an important enough topic in the community. And I'd like to hear what my colleagues, how they would like to address it outside of the budget. So I was just looking for guidance from you on that. As you know, we've engaged with the lobbyists in DC. We've received a proposal to have them advocate for us and New Providence and Berkeley Heights. Or we can also, you know, potentially, but this issue stems all the way up from Memorial Field. I've been in those residents' homes. And I think that taking up Director Schreger's time on this is probably, which is too much to handle. So I'm just looking for some guidance on how we can talk about it as colleagues up here.
Okay. Well, let's talk and we can brainstorm.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments?
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Boyer?
The Salt Brook currently is in the budget as a line item for, I think, $50,000 to build a retaining wall. I agree with Councilwoman Hamlet. I think it's in our committee. I think we, we, we just, we take it out of our committee and ask Council President to put it on the agenda, right? And I think we do it that way. So, yeah.
Well, it's a capital item, right? So we'd have to be part of the capital budget.
Yeah. I think, I think we should, I think we should talk about that for $50,000 as a capital item as opposed to, yeah.
Other comments? Councilman Smallwood?
Sure. Like to make a motion to adjourn?
Whoa, hold on. We haven't, I haven't asked everyone if they had stuff to speak yet. I did have something I wanted to say, but now you've completely cleared my mind about it. Maybe it wasn't, maybe it wasn't all that important. I didn't want to say. Any other comments from council, I think?
No.
No? No? All right. Then I'm going to not hold this up here. We had a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right. We are adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.